I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. In your moment of silence, if you would remember Jenny Bartley. Jenny passed away this morning after a courageous battle against cancer. Her husband Jim works in the Public Works Department here in the village, so please keep them all in your thoughts and prayers.
(inaudible) 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 All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam. Trustee Kazam?
Are you there, Beth? Let's come back to that.
Okay. Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, welcome, everyone. You want to try and text her, Stephanie, please, to see what's going on. We'll move on to item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on October 4th, 2022, as for motion.
Motion made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments from the audience go on once, twice. Comments are closed. We will be at old business. Any old business come before the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first is approval of Resolution 2022-06, a resolution approving an agreement for federal advisory services. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-06.
Second, please.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
I'm actually going to ask Mr. Aldrich to set this up. He kind of came with this idea, so I think he could give it more justice than I could.
Director Aldrich, sorry to interrupt you. Trustee Kazam, are you with us now?
Yes, I'm present.
Hi, Beth. We just started new business.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. This is a limited service contract with Cardinal Infrastructure. Cardinal is a group and Ms. Anya Graves, who I've known Anya for 22 years now. She's a DC, I would call her a federal funding consultant. Some people would call them in the old days lobbyists, but she's based in DC and works primarily with the US Department of Transportation, helping clients fund these types of projects. But she's also worked with HUD, the Housing, Urban Development, and Natural Resources folks and different agencies out there trying to get projects funded. So in Normal, Illinois, we hired Anya early on. I mean, she was one of the first consultants we hired when we started a redevelopment project, knowing that federal funding was going to be an important source of funding for that project. So we knew that we needed help, not just with the delegation, so the congressmen, the senators, and other folks like that, but also with the agency people in DC. And that's something that a lot of these consultants don't focus on. So the actual folks with Federal Transit Administration, Federal Railroad, or Federal Highway Administration, so the people that you actually work with, once you do get funding. So her firm is very familiar with these folks. She's very well respected in Washington, DC. So there are other groups that do this type of work, but because we had experience with her in Normal, and I have personal experience with her, plus she is very familiar with the delegation from this area, having worked in Bloomington, Normal, and central Illinois before. So Congressman LaHood's office, Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth, those folks that will need help getting any grants through, she's very familiar with. So her firm helps with communication with the delegation, also with the agency folks, will help us with strategy for different grants, things like that. You know, I think we may not know about particular grant details, but she will. There may be certain grants that we say, hey, should we apply for this? And she'll say, yes, do, or sometimes, no, don't, because she knows enough to advise us in those ways. And she'll also help with the process, like if there's something we should do, she'll remind us to do it, or she'll go ahead and do it as far as communication with delegation or agency people. So she also helps with the actual grant application process. So various things she does or will do for us if this gets approved. I think that's about all. Everything else is kind of covered in her proposal, but again, limited service contract for six months. She's proposing six-month services for $7,500, which I think is very reasonable. And really, we went with a short-term proposal because we think that'll get us through this earmark process for Prospect Road. So we still have an earmark that's out there. It got through LaHood's office with House approval, so now it's trying to get it through the Senate with Senator Durbin or Duckworth or both, to try to get that through all the appropriate committees, things like that. And again, that was for just Phase One of Prospect Road for about $2.5 million. We were asking for $2 million from a grant or an earmark for that project. So and then hopefully, if we get that through this process, then we can ask for other funds through other different funding.
Before we open it up for discussion, I'd like to add that we did invite Scott Sorrell, the Peoria County Administrator, to sit in with us when we interviewed Anya. It's not a given, but I think Peoria County will eventually decide to use someone as well. And we were looking at the cost of everything so that we might expand the cost to other governmental entities. And I brought this up at the Tri-County Planning Meeting. I still sit on the planning commission for three counties, and we were prioritizing road projects. We're going through a process of prioritizing regional road projects. And I don't want to get too far off topic, but one of the challenges facing Illinois and the region is population loss. So at one time, Peoria had a congressman in Bob Michael, and then a congressman in Ray LaHood, who resided in this area. They resided in Peoria. And unfortunately now, Darren LaHood, who's been a great advocate for us, he will only have a very small slice of Peoria Heights in his new district, and his district will go all the way, I think, to the Wisconsin border. Geographically, it's so large. And then Sherri Bustos, also, her district is changing, and she's not running, so there will be another congressman in that district. So my point is that the region and regional leaders need to recognize that the influence in both Washington, DC, and Springfield is diminishing by every person that leaves the area. So it's quite concerning. And you don't, you just don't love having to hire a consultant for a lot of these things, but unfortunately, the congressional influence is going away. So again, not getting too far off topic, that's why I think this is even more important. And I did talk with Brad Stotler. He's Congressman LaHood's Chief of Staff, and they know Anya and like her and say she's, does a very good job. So thank you for letting me say that. Now we're open for questions.
I think you may have answered one of my questions, but so we're wanting to hire this lobbyist essentially to help us with the Prospect Grant opportunity.
And others. I mean, as other things come up during this period, but that's, that's one of the primary things that this six-month contract is for, is to help us through that earmark.
Okay. And the board will set the scope of work, but right now, it's Prospect, it could include, I mean, there's lots of water issues and infrastructure we need to talk about. That's all for all of you to decide. This is just a short-term contract, and I think we need to pay very close attention to this as for the next six months. And if you decide to renew it or go another route or partner with Peoria County, you know, we talked about with Scott Sorrell that possibly, again, possibly, that maybe the county might hold this contract eventually, and then some of the other smaller communities could do some à la carte things that they're specifically interested in. But the region has huge infrastructure and road needs as well.
Right. And then her budget proposal, she said, along with the invoice, that we'll get a report of activities, and that'll be provided to the board?
It will, if the board wishes, but typically, it will come with their invoice, just a list of items that complete.
If the board approves this tonight, so Administrator Sutton, Mr. Aldrich will be the point person on this, and we give, we would expect him or you to give periodic updates.
Correct.
Okay.
That's all, all the questions I had.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that it's unfortunate that we're going to have, that we even need to do this, that through redistricting and whatever has been done in Springfield, we've eaten away at a lot of the local representation that we have both in Washington. And I think whoever represents the Heights in Congress will be hailing from the Quad Cities. So it's unfortunate that our people who are based here in Peoria County will not be representing us in Washington, but that's the reality of the situation. So, you know, when I saw this, $7,500 for lobbyist, it's pretty, I was like, wow, that's, is that enough? Because, you know, that's, does that, who do you get into the door in DC for six months for $7,500? But Wayne, if she can work some magic with these pennies, then, then great. Hopefully, we get some results from this, but, you know, I, I hope it's money well-spent, and hopefully, we can get some good returns on this.
And I think we forgot to mention that Congressman LaHood has put in the omnibus finance bill, $2 million for engineering, but that has not passed Congress yet. It's in the hands of the Senate, so, you know, we're working with Senator Durbin to make sure that that stays in, so.
Well, and on the, from the, just from the Department of Transportation side, there's a whole lot of money there to be, to be allocated, and I know that things need to come from some of that transportation bill, so hopefully, she can find some that can be sent to our way.
And I will say, Ms. Graves did help. She's already helped us out without charging us for, with one of these applications for these congressional funding. So she sat, you know, was on the phone and actually guided us through that application process.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. Next is the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau update, Trustee DeVore. So I think everyone knows that we, as of this budget year, have an enhanced relationship with the Build Peoria, the formerly known as Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. That gives us a seat on the board, and we, earlier this year, appointed Trustee DeVore to be that liaison. So Sarah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so first, Trustee Kazam, myself, and Sarah did sit down with Ashley Hillbrand. She is our direct connection with Discover Peoria. I had Sarah put in our packet so that you guys could resee the agreement that we have with them, since our resources with them do change from year to year. We gain a little bit more. As our rate price increases, then we also gain more benefits with them, so I just want you to see that. You do have two, two quarters displayed here of the reach that they have been able to provide for us. They actually were only done with quarter one, and Ashley did go through and push so that I could have quarter two to share with you today. None of the other communities have those numbers yet. But as it reads, like if you're looking at it, the first page in each quarter is going to give you kind of like a graph of the reach that they've been able to provide for us. And then the social engagement, this, under that, that is their entire reach. So everything they've done, those are the amount of people they're reaching, that's the amount of following. But if you look above, this is the breakdown of the, like, the specific posts that they have made that have helped Peoria Heights directly. The following pages after that are going to be the actual posts or the actual actions of where these numbers came from. So this is giving us, like, these are where they took those numbers, so that they can't just say, well, we're reaching 10,000 people, and not providing us the backup of, like, how are you reaching those people? Then if you, the page after that is going to show us, like, the top features that we're being clicked on for Peoria Heights, and all of the times that Peoria Heights is mentioned on their website, and the amount of clicks that that item is receiving. And then, so if you look between quarter one and quarter two, you'll actually see that they, we have increased a lot. Our views have increased a lot. We're getting a lot of people going on their website, looking for things to do, and clicking on Peoria Heights, and seeing what items that they want to do in that, like with Inside the Village. Also, any business that has anything to do with hospitality or tourism, I really highly encourage them to please respond to the emails or letters that they have received from Discover Peoria, or reach out to myself, and I can get them in contact with Discover Peoria, because each business that we have signed up with them, they gain benefits from that as well, as well as that helps increase the amount of reach that we are going to get from this contract we have with them. If you look, if you look on the last, like, on the last page, it shows you the businesses that have already, like, signed up with them, and you can see that it is a short, a shorter list. So all of our businesses really filling that, like, the information out and getting their logos to Discover Peoria, that's just going to be more visibility that Peoria Heights has on their website. If the business does not fall into the tourism and hospitality category, they do get a major discount because we are of a partnership with them. They can have their business listed, too. So for example, like a financial company, maybe you wouldn't get it for free, but they could get their business listed on the Discover Peoria page for only $125, which is a huge discount to them. And again, the more people that we have follow through with the actions with them, the more visibility that we're going to get. Some exciting things that we have coming up with Discover Peoria is that we are now, we will now have an editorial in the magazine. The magazine is changing, so the magazine used to be, like, full-size, very similar to the Peoria magazine. They are finding that Peoria Magazine is doing such a great job, it wasn't something they wanted to compete with. So we are taking, they're taking the magazines down to just a little bit smaller of a size, but they're going to be able to mass put those out and leave them out longer, and they'll have QR codes for all of, like, if you scan the QR code in the editorial about Peoria Heights, it'll take you right to the Discover Peoria page that lists all the items for Peoria Heights. Some other good things that they have done for us already is that since we have a partnership with them, anybody that falls into the Meet the Makers catalog, so any business that has handmade, homemade, or locally-made items, they can potentially win an award. So any business that we have that fits this criteria, if they know about it, they'll automatically submit them to win this award. This year, Truskers did win this award, and they are listed in the Makers, in the Makers magazine. I do have more information if anyone wants to know if they know of a business or someone in town that would meet this criteria. If we let Ashley know, they will always submit them to, to be placed inside this contest. So just really some fun things that they're doing for us, and I feel like they're working hard. I think they have great communication skills. I know if Trustee Kazam, myself, or Sarah has reached out to them, we get a response almost right away. The, I know they're working well with the Chamber, and anytime the Chamber has an activity, they are more than happy to share on any of the news stations, on their website, they're posting it on their social media. So I really feel like they are doing us a good service in helping keep our visibility in the social media side moving in a great direction.
Beth, before we take questions, Trustee Kazam, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just want to reiterate all of the cooperation and the attentiveness that they give to us regarding all of our, like, the Taste of Peoria, the Kringle Market, any event, any promotional materials that we need, they are there for us. It's been a very valuable resource.
Okay, thank you, ladies. We'll be open for discussion.
Where, Trustee DeVore, where it says page views, do you know if those are unique page views, or just, are those?
Which page are you on, I'm sorry?
So, sorry, on the Discover Peoria website, where it says page views, all those unique views, like 15,000 people, or is it just, do you know if that's just a couple people clicking on it a lot of times?
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to find.
Are you on the overview, Trustee Weisenberg?
The pages aren't listed, but we're on the back page here where it says website views.
Website, are you on, are you on quarter two or quarter one?
I'm on, it's on both, but it's the page right behind.
Page views, okay, those are unique, so like, that is someone, like, going in.
That's, so that's unique views, okay.
Yeah, it is a unique view.
Okay.
Trustee DeVore, you, you had said that, I know our fees go up this year from $15,000 to $20,000 for this service, but you said there's some additional benefits that we get for that extra $5,000 we're paying this year as opposed to last. Can you tell me what those benefits are?
I can. So one of them is a custom logo and branding kit. So we initially talked about this, that they would help us go through, like, our Peoria Heights logo, see if that's working for us, and talk about, like, our branding as a whole, and if we want to change that. So we have the option for them to design us a new logo and work in the branding kit. This year also, we, we do get the full feature in the magazine, right? So that's going to be another thing. And then the other is that we are going to have a dedicated e-blast of $6,000 to any kind of, like, travel and leisure.
Okay.
To any, for all, any of that. And then next year, the main thing that we would get when we move into the next year, just so you know, is where they take a drone, and they'll do video footage, and we'll get our own videos, like showcasing the village.
So that's.
This year, it really changes into the, the magazine and having the logo package. Next year is going to be the.
The drone. And so that, that's in fiscal year 2023, right, when we get the drone?
It would be, so we're ending fiscal year now, so the drone will be '24.
Twenty, 2024.
But that would be a contract the board would approve in December.
Yeah.
Not yet, approved yet. So again, this is a trial period that we entered into, and getting updates from Trustee DeVore and Trustee Kazam on our relationship with them.
Because we only agreed to two years, then every year we get to reevaluate, right? So we were only fully committed to this year and next, this, last year, which is 2022 and 2023.
Oh.
And every year after that, it's, we get to re-decide if we would like to stay with them.
With the, with the magazine that they're doing, you said there's some changes.
There is.
Are they going to publish it the same amount, or are they going to just, just publish it and then hold, leave it out there for a long, longer while and do less publication?
I think that it's going to be, that, I think there's still going to be four a year, and then they'll just, but they won't, it won't be constantly changing, like, some of the things will stay the same.
Got it.
So that those QR codes and stuff are going to be something that if it's left out, like, you go to your doctor's office, someone doesn't switch the magazine, like, those QR codes are still going to be active, from, from what I understand from Ashley.
One of the things that I had mentioned when we approved the two-year trial was getting data back from Discover Peoria, and this is a lot of data. I appreciate this. This really gives us an insight on the effectiveness of the money we're spending. You know, reaching 30,000 people is a good return, in my opinion. I mean, especially when we're trying to attract people to come eat and attend our events, so I do appreciate the data. So thank you, Trustee DeVore.
And I'd like to echo that, and we all have a lot of duties here, but this is just one other duty now, and another meeting that Trustee DeVore has to attend, but to make sure that our investment pays dividends, so.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of data here, so thank you.
I really do, I mean, they are, they have been wonderful to work with, and if you guys see something that you want them to add for us, like, if there's something you're not seeing on the Discover Peoria Facebook or Instagram, or if you're not seeing something listed, like, they are open to any suggestion we have. Like, we can ask them virtually to post anything that we want. So let's say we do this anniversary thing for the village, like, they would blast that all year long for us, you know? So they're really a part, the partnership works as long as we help provide the information, right? So if, the more our businesses sign up for it, and the more this board and other boards, like, have an active part in what they're posting, the more we're going to get out of this partnership with them.
And I would like to say, though, that those requests should come through you to them. Any?
Yeah, like, if you let me know, then I'll either get, work with Sarah, or I can message Ashley directly. And like I said, they respond so quickly, it's wonderful to work with them on that.
If, would that be, could we put that on our website, that if businesses need to come to you, just to make them aware of that, so that you're the liaison for?
Sure. So Ashley has reached out to every business that qualifies multiple times. So they have received several emails, phone calls, and mailers. So they should all, that qualify, should have already been notified, but absolutely, we could put it on the website. We could even, Ashley would be okay if we listed her email on there to contact, and she will go through the process of setting them up.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
I was wondering, this is a lot of data that shows that there's a lot of interest, a lot of people taking notice. Is there any feedback as far as how, how much benefit we've received as a community from all of this? I mean, as far as increased traffic in restaurants or attractions or anything like that? Is there, is there any feedback on that?
No, I think that would be very hard for us to gauge, too. You know, like, I think we would technically have to, like, probably put out a survey or, like, a comment card at a restaurant to find out how someone heard about something. I just think that that portion of it would be very hard to track.
I thought it might be, but I didn't know if anybody, if, like, someone may have mentioned, hey, you know, wow, since this started, we've really picked up business or anything like that. I didn't know, that's more what I'm thinking of. I didn't think there'd been a survey.
No. And I mean, I heard positive things from the Chamber, that they were happy about the partnership and relationship they've been able to have with Discover Peoria, but I have not heard anything specifically, like, from, from a restaurant owner or anything like that about how it's doing.
Okay. I think that's a good question. It is hard to measure, but in my opinion, we are making this big investment to generate primarily sales tax revenue for the village. So I mean, one of the, it might not be a perfect measurement, but having the treasurer pay attention to sales tax revenue since we've begun this contract to see if, if we see significant increases, but it is a big investment, and we want to make sure that it is paying off, so.
Yeah, I'm not, having seen this before, it does seem like a lot of money to me. But if we're, if we feel that the benefit is there, then sure, you know? Like Mayor is saying, you know, that the whole point is to raise our, our, our tax, our tax revenue, and $25,000, are we getting that much? I hope so. I hope so, down the line. I understand that we only paid $15 this time, so.
Well, and your Administrator and I talk about money being spent all the time, about every day, and we've, we talk about this contract, but as you know, we both, our management style is to delegate, and Trustee DeVore has taken this on and put a lot of time in it, along with Trustee Kazam, and they're recommending that things are going well, and saying that things are going well, so I have confidence in their recommendation.
I feel at this point, it's still an asset. Like, I still think it's worth the money, and I think it's only going to get better. So I think it's, I think we're, I'm sure it's paying off, in my opinion.
But I think you made, one of the most important points is that the relationship is only as good as the information and the participation we have with them, that the information we get to them and.
Yeah.
Participation.
I mean, in any business here that has an event, the sooner we can let them know, the sooner it goes on the calendar, the sooner they can start promoting it. Like, they're on the news every morning, like, every week in the morning, you know? The more information we can give them, the better turnout we're going to have.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one footnote, because Trustee DeVore here mentioned about Treskers getting an award. Just this past week, they celebrated six years being in the new building. They got the shirts, and it says "Six Years" and everything. So, I just wanted to make that, it all started with them. And it's nice to see six years, and they're doing well. So, the media didn't pick up on it, but I think they've been a great asset. So, of course, I might be biased, but...
Thank you, Trustee Gett. Well, and if anyone needs help with the media, we have a liaison here. So, that's, Mike's always happy to help people write up press releases and get information out. He does a great job of that. So, you know, people, put them in contact with us. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for that update. Trustee DeVore, anything else under administration?
Not, Mayor.
While we're under new business, I'm just going to pause and ask any other committee chairman if they, any of you have any updates? No updates from anyone?
I could give a quick update on the trail. I spoke with someone from Walker today. They are, the piping is all set, all good. They're starting to put asphalt back on the trail, and they're hoping, within the next couple of weeks, that trail should be back open.
Thank you, Chris.
And also, update for the Upper Prospect Peoria work here. Forest Park Drive will be closed for a few hours on Friday to accommodate their overlay that they're doing north of Forest Park Drive there.
Okay. Mr. Aldrich, anything you have to report on?
One thing is, we have been still, of course, working on the water capital plan. So, we've seen, Superintendent Chandler and I have seen a draft report on the capital plan. We're also talking about funding options for the capital plan, as well as the lead service line replacement. So, expect to have some of the plans completed by the end of the year, and then maybe by February, some, some additional funding options.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous business to come for the board?
Mr. Mayor, one thing, and Trustee Gett reminded me of this, we were talking about Treskers, six years in their new building. One thing, on October 14th, a local business here, Peoria Pizza Works, they celebrated 50 years in business right there. And I know that some of the best Chicago-style pizza around, right there. So I wanted to say kudos, and hopefully, another great 50 years right here in the Heights. So, congratulations to those folks.
Any other miscellaneous?
We'd be at payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion, or any question on any of the bills?
Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The bills are paid. Next is the treasurer's report. Madam Clerk?
As of the end of September, in the village-controlled account, there was $6,813,719.68. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,864,315.92.
All right, you heard the treasurer's report. I would ask for a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the report. Are there any questions on the report? Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee Gett?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion signify the same aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Adjourn.